I'm speaking to order at 7:47, roll call.
Charles Randy Snead.
Dylan Colber.
Sean Harlan.
George Knoll.
Suzanne Unbock.
Derek Jones.
Lisa Lanning.
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For anybody out there that sees this new face up here on the board, we had Dustin resign and the Democratic Party appointed Sean to take his place. So we're not sitting here with an empty seat. So welcome Sean, thank you for taking the position.
Thank you, and I hope to do my best for the residents of the town.
Minutes of 11:21, 2018. Any additions, corrections?
I move to pass the minutes for 11:21, 18.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Pass the minutes, any further discussion?
I'd like to make one correction. I believe in the minutes it says EMS director. We set it workshop for 6:30. You didn't set it? We set it for 6:30, we just didn't start it.
Okay, gotcha.
Well, we did not set, in the minutes, we were gonna do the workshop at 6:30. We had to set it for 7:00 because of the police commission.
That's right.
So, that's why we moved it.
That's good. With no other discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. I'm gonna abstain because I was not here.
Opposed? One abstention, four, one. Passed. Citizens input. Come on Carol.
Nothing. Town looks nice, they decorated Christmas decorations.
Alright, well that's a plus. Anyone else? Attorney report.
A few things guys, just to keep kinda up to speed on stuff, but regarding the Tipp district out there, that is, I believe concluded. It's basically the declaratory resolution, confirmatory resolution, economic belt plan, tax to tax statement, all that's been reported. It's been mailed to the DLGF, it's been mailed to the county auditor. I've got a copy of that, if anybody wants to take a look at that, but it's the recorded copy, but that should conclude us, and I think you've got a recorded copy. Do you have one? Okay, so if anybody wants this, you're welcome to have it, I can make other copies and circulate it.
All interested.
The farm lease guys, there's nothing to act on this evening, but I just do wanna let you know that the bid specs were published November 29th and December 6th. Bids are due. Close business December the 17th. At our next meeting on the 19th, we're gonna open those bids and award that farm lease. I have three conflict of interest disclosures from Ed Barkus, from John Vander Wheel, and from Mark Vander Wheel. Because their positions are appointed positions, it does require the approval of the governing body. So I've got those for your consideration. I need to have those around before the end of the year. They're basically the same as we've done years past. Take a vote, approve those is what would be appropriate.
Sorry, didn't mean to take away from that for your team. Sorry. You guys are gonna give them to...
To provide just a real quick summary, both John and Mark Vander Wheel obviously are affiliated with the best center of the town purchases, supplies, materials, what have you, from that facility. So that's something that needs to be disclosed, and basically the form. Ed works for the country to relay occasionally will bid on a vehicle for the town, or provide a quote for a vehicle, and that's a rationale there for that conflict disclosure. Everybody understand?
Little motion to accept conflict interest statements.
Take a motion to accept the conflict of interest statements.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Guys, those will need to sign before you leave here this evening. The last thing I have is an issue that we have with former police officer Miles Scott. If you would recall back in June, he signed an agreement that he was going to repay the town a sum of $837.39 because he had used more benefit days than he had earned. He signed this agreement, he acknowledged that he owed that amount, and he also indicated that he was going to pay $50 per month beginning August 1st of 2018. He hasn't paid anything. Come to find out that he was also owed money from the Argus Fire Department because of service there. I'm not sure of that amount, but Lisa did contact him and ask if the amount that was owed to him from the fire department could be applied to the balance that he owes to the town. Apparently at first maybe indicated that he would do that, but then he changed his mind, said no he was not. The fire department is a separate standalone entity, it needs to pay Mr. Scott what is owed and due to him, but we're also at the point where he's not paid anything on this amount that he said that he wanted to, or not that he wanted to, that he agreed to pay. So Lisa suggested that we bring that to suit and collect on that. Before I do that, I wanted your approval or blessing to move that forward in the form of a collection matter to be filed in Superior Court Number Two.
So he had money coming from the fire department?
Yes, we'll pay from that.
And did we not, didn't the county use to, could somebody with property taxes take that money without?
That was property taxes, that's a different entity altogether.
Seeing as how the town contracts with the fire department, this is a situation we all get into. And we regulate what's paid to them, we can't hold it about this, right?
Without him agreeing to do it, we could be getting into more trouble then. It's worth, to be honest, to collect the $837.39. And if we wanna collect that, I think the best way to do that is to move it forward on a small one in Superior Court Number Two. Good news is, I think we can tack on attorney fees and add to that total. In other words, if he doesn't wanna do what we would consider to be the proper thing here to relinquish the money that's owed to him from the fire department, then we have to be able to...
There's a motion, go ahead and hand me the motion to continue with the collections.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second too, go ahead. Go to collections. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign, motion carried. You gotta get a poker face tonight, I don't tell you, you're just sitting down there so somber tonight. Go ahead, I was gonna say man.
I'd like to accept the attorney report.
A motion, how about a second?
Second.
Motion, a second to accept attorney report. Does anybody have any other questions before we go on? Not all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Board openings, Plan Commission and Police Commission.
And we'll have an opening on the date today, but I do not have the resignation letter yet.
And the one for the Police Commission. Does it have to be a board member? He wanted to stay under the citizen, I don't know if he can do that. Put your question again, George. Sean is on the council. He was also on the Police Commission. Police Commission being a paid position.
Yeah, we have to, you see, there's statute of ordinance, basically if you are on the Police Commission and you were also on the council, then you're waiving your pay, I believe, on the Police Commission. But I think there's more to it than just, I think there's some political party affiliation requirements, if I remember right, we looked into this maybe a month ago.
Well Sean's a Democrat, so he could take Dustin's place as a Democrat as council. Okay, then we would just need a Democrat citizen.
Well, he was a council, he was liaison to the Police Commission, but he was also a member of the Police Commission. So, you know, he legally was a member. I figured since Sean was taking Dustin's spot, and Dustin did not receive any pay for Police Commission, that that's kinda where Sean would fall. Then Sean's position would be open. What Sean is asking is, can he retain his citizen position without going into Dustin's council position?
In relinquishing the pay?
Yes.
Whatever works then. I would like to remain on the Police Commission because I have spent a lot of time on there many years, and I enjoy that, and I feel like do a good job for the town and for the department at that. I really don't wanna, I know where it was when I started, and I know where we're at today, and I would hate to see that. It's hard to find people, and we have good people on there.
Now, if Sean does not get elected again next year, is there a possibility that he could remain as a citizen member then? Okay, and then we could appoint another council member as a liaison, not as a member? Dustin kind of both positions, do you see what I'm saying?
I understand. And is there a possibility, yes. I think it's gonna depend on the composition of the board at that time. Again, with that political party, we kinda have to be conscious of that. That if there were two Democrats on it at that point in time, then that could be an issue, could be a problem.
Okay, right now, we, let's see, Sean takes Dustin's place, we have an opening for Democrat as citizens. We don't find any Democrats as citizens, can we not go and appoint a Republican?
What was the language in that?
Yes, you can, according to the language, if one cannot be found, okay? But I think I have an independent that's interested.
Plus, we also had another person who was interested that we didn't appoint.
Right, but that is a Republican position. And so, I'm just saying, I think I have an interest. I have not received the letter yet, but I think told verbally that they would like, and they are independent, so that means that they are of a different...
On my, we prefer to follow the statute if just we can, if we can, but if it's not possible, then I think there can be a way to fill this spot without the political party department.
Okay, so the opening we have right now is citizen on Police Commission. BZA, the Plan, which he was also on which? Plan Commission?
Plan Commission. So we have a serious need for one of you to be on the Plan Commission.
You were gonna go and ask your wife, did you ever ask your...
No, I never did ask.
They meet once a month, first Tuesday of every month, and we are rewriting the land use book, so plan out some hours. I'm sorry, but we, and we also are looking for more members that have a professional background that would be useful on the Plan Commission. We need three of those. Besides a county member.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, throw my name in there, I'll just say I can't do that anymore.
Do you have to give me a letter? Or when we go to both offices in January, well just a point.
Alright, down to the next one. EMS director. This has been on the plate for quite a while, as everybody knows Richie is stepping down at the first of the year. Life changes, involvement, he said he still wants to be on the department and active with Fire and EMS, and he just has other obligations pressing that he wants to fulfill family-wise, which I don't blame him at all, we'll all go through those. We had two very good candidates tonight, both with outstanding resumes and good references. So with that being said, would you two stand up, sort of like see who you are, and introduce yourself if they don't know?
I'm Sarah McCollum, I'm an EMT.
Peter DeVos, been an EMT going on 21 years, fireman 17, and just look to move the EMS service forward in the positive direction. Thank you.
Okay, we spent the last few days talking about it, I guess, one-on-one, and we had our meeting earlier tonight, so with that, does anyone have a motion approved that they would like to have as EMS director?
I'd like to make the motion to nominate Sarah McCollum as director of the EMS department.
Is there a second for Sarah? It's a motion to accept Sarah. Second. Is there any other discussion on having Sarah as director? If not all in favor of having Sarah as our new EMS director, signify by saying aye. 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 Opposed? Motion carried. Reasoning for this, and we gotta say this because I just don't want everybody going out here being upset, Pete's done an excellent job as EMS assistant director, an EMT, and fire, and I hope he will continue to do so. Sarah, we might call her the newbie, she's from out of town, but she's gonna put in some time. Pete does have a full-time job, which he was going to work her out, and both of you are very qualified. We're looking for something new right now, and we're gonna take a step out and take a chance. So with that, I'd like to thank both of you.
We're hoping, both of you are very qualified, that you can work together. I think you would complement each other, I truly do. So if you can work together, I think that would be a real strength for the department.
Okay. IHCA grant opportunity, Suzanne. George?
Yeah. We forgot the other old business.
Oh, we have another business? Okay, sorry.
Sorry Suzanne, it is, the other old business is this, we've been working on getting the grant to build a new EMS station. And so, when we agreed to do this through, let me think of her name now, anyhow. Shannon, yeah. Anyhow, the first step was to get an architect, meeting with architects, have them lay out plans and show us, you know, see where we wanted to go, what we wanted to look like, and all this and that. So Shannon sent us a list of people that she has worked with, because she's been doing with the 4H and different ones here, and so she came back with two, the Troyer Group out of Mission Walker, and then this one is Argus, A-R-K-O-S Design, and looks like they're also out in Mission Walker. And what I think, and what I'd like to see is, we need to get these people down here, possibly at the next meeting, maybe get one of them here, say 6:30 or quarter to 7:00, and get the other one here a little later, and talk to them, and start seeing what they wanna do and what they can do for us, so we can get this rolling, because to get this grant going, we have got to get, like I said, this is the first step, we've gotta get this part done. So that's just my opinion, is we need to get them down here by the next meeting, and see what they can do for us, and what we need to do, working with them.
Well first of all, I think we need a, kind of a direction of what we even want.
Well, that's why you can talk to them, because we don't have a clue really to, you know, these people have, Troyer especially, they've done the new Lakeville, the renovation and new construction of the Lakeville, they also did the South Bend Fire State renewal at number nine, they've done Town Milford, they've done Millbury, La Porte, and different ones, so they've got a lot of experience, and so they know what the show is. And maybe to give us some guidance and direction, because you're not, have ever built one of these buildings, you know, we don't really know what to do. This other group here. I'm not sure, they're acting like they've got, they've got a lot of experience, but I don't see a list of anything that they have done. Unless anyone knows any architects local, and...
No, we tried that with the station we have now, you see what we got?
Yeah, I know.
Well, I think we need to know what our needs are, and they will fit that. But we need to know, we need to be specific with what the need is.
Yeah, and that's what these people can show us, because we don't...
They would show us our need, we need to know our need.
We've already went through the needs, Suzanne, we know that we need a new building, and we know why, we've already voted on all this, we've already allocated the money for it.
Specifics.
How, what do you want? What mansion, what sizes, what do you want?
Ask the chief of the fire department.
How many trucks are we gonna fit in there, how much?
Well, that's what, that's what we have Mark for, and different ones, that's, they're the ones that's gonna make that decision, as to how big it is, how many trucks.
Then they need to be here for that meeting.
They need to be here.
So we need to, yeah, joint meeting.
Because we don't know how many bays you need, you guys know how many bays you need, how long they need to be, what it would take, you know, we've gave you some thoughts, and I, you know, my thoughts were always to have a drive-through, so the trucks could be drove through, but that's still, you know, you're the guys that's gonna have to make the decision, offices, what you need, training rooms.
Can you set it up?
You may wanna wait to the first of the week to call them, Mr. Troyer just passed away earlier this week. The owner of the Troyer Group, the founder, he's the one that built the Ark down in Kentucky. He just passed away earlier this week, so that company's a little in disarray right now.
They reached out and they said, and they were also recommended to me by somebody that said that they worked with the Marshall County Stellar Group, and that they were wonderful, so.
Alright, then anybody else have any other old business?
Yeah, as liaison on redevelopment, I reached out to Mark Vander Wheel, and Paul, you can definitely back some of this up, I'm sure. Their housing contract with the developer worked out just fine, last we checked.
We'll find out next week.
Right, exactly. Well, he's saying it worked out, and they're gonna have two lots purchased by the end of the month, and one per quarter from there, so hopefully we can start growing it, you know, some urban housing, so.
This won't take in place all...
Colonial Heights.
Colonial Heights. Yeah, Colonial Estates, that's what it is.
The new park.
Okay, is that it?
Well, this was part of the Stellar, and saw something in the works for a little bit. IHCA, Indiana Housing and Community Development Authority, they have a program to assist lower-middle income families to acquire a new home. These families must have a WPP member, and have, must have decent credit, able to acquire their own mortgage. Now through this program, the Habitat Office implement, they would screen the applicants, they would work with them on the financing, they would act as a resource for financing and help them to find the financing, but they, the person has to be able to get the mortgage on their own. The anticipated start date for building homes would be late 2019. Brent Martin is the architect, I had a conversation with him a couple days ago. The grant administrator is hired, through the Neighborhood Development Association, which I think is in South Bend and Mission Walker. Now the possibility for the grant is up to $40,000 per home. And what they would be building is 1,200 square feet homes, and they hope to keep the price under $100,000. Now there's a need to identify the purchaser of the home, and the grant app goes in, and they, the applicants have to be able to wait until construction, until it's done. That's been the problem Brent said in the past when they did project in Plymouth. The challenge for Argus, because this is a great opportunity, but our challenge is, lots are generally donated by the town for their match. And they are looking for three lots in Argus, and they're ready to do the environmental study right now. So we have this possibility, if we can donate three lots, it would be a great asset to three families, because that would be significant if the lot is donated, if they could get up to $40,000 toward their mortgage, toward their home.
Is there any size in these lots, or restriction or anything?
Not that I'm aware of.
Does the town have three lots?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, I'd be getting started...
Because that's my first question, do you have a lot to donate?
No. The town has some land, pieces here and there, that's why I asked about the size. I'm not sure any of it's big enough to be lots, but...
What about the three lots that we have, Habitat, would they be willing to...
Habitat wants to hang on to them, they want those for Habitat. Because they're separate programs, and even though D- buyers with Habitat would be doing all the screening of this program.
Wonder what church is going to offer options this week?
I don't know that I'm in the mood to go buy something, but if you're around and donate it. donate it.
Sometimes it's cheaper.
Well, I understand.
Now, I presented this also to ACDC Monday evening.
Was there any, was there a gift from the ACDC? I mean, do you guys have possible lots, any given out as well? No, not this time?
They're making a purchase of lots, but they committed those two homes, they would...
We've got, yeah, we've got the, pretty much the construction lined up on that and everything, so as soon as we've got that purchased from the school, which should happen here very soon, we'll start busting around, I think we're putting, we're putting on three houses and six lots.
Now, would it have to be the ARGUS, would it have to be the town of ARGUS, or could somebody, Michael Lane himself, donate it to the town and they go on?
I think of random, if you donate, but I don't have all the answers.
George, you're gonna have to dig one.
That was mentioned, Dale, not George, but you might...
We have lots, or...
Donate three lots or four, but there's no sewer.
That you might be willing to donate.
They can donate, we'll get the sewer.
Gaynor's out to the sewer, and already been trained.
Could have one station, I would check it out.
But I'll have to ask you that.
Well, I was looking at, like, move down there beside that one for Habitat, for Humanity, that we condemned the house and had it tore down. People still own it, but they're not doing anything with it, and their intention was to donate that house before it happened, and the whole tax thing got screwed up, so there's an empty lot sitting down there right now on Cherry Street, that could possibly have, should write off for them. You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I thought they already wanted the Habitat, though.
No, 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 the one on Cherry, that one's on Grove. The one on Grove and Apple sits on the corner, sits on the corner of Habitat, the one just in the center. There's three lots on Cherry Street, the center lot is where we had that house condemned and tore down, so that's an empty lot, that's the one right there.
George, you have, you have, you have the church as well?
Well, I think that's...
You know, I rent the house, George.
Yeah, there's, that's a swamp right now.
They can fix that.
Oh, beside Mark, right there. Something to look into there.
And that little, that little jet, the little jet, yeah, that they say is worth, you know, like, it's not really, for industrial purposes, you know, it wouldn't...
It's not big enough, yeah.
They're doing the acre lots.
Acre lots.
That's a big one.
It's a big lot, one twenty by one twenty is about, one, just...
Forty-three thousand five hundred sixty-three.
A half acre is...
Well, well, let's, let's look into it, see what we can find.
Definitely.
Because that would be a great opportunity.
Yeah. So you're looking for how many, three right now?
Yes. Three, ARGUS is three, Burbank has already donated for three homes, they've done that, they've donated lots already. They would like a big one, if they can.
I still want one on Cherry Street.
Turn on the others.
Okay, yeah, let's...
We need to help people, try to get a hold of some people on. Uh, no, actually, I was just reading them.
Okay, well, that sounds like a good idea, we're gonna...
I'm not pursuing lots, but I'm bringing the program to you.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'll work on, I'll work on some lots, because I got, put my name on that one. Salary ordinance, everybody get a chance, it's very lengthy compared to the one page we used to have. It does not have to be passed tonight, but it does have to be passed at the next meeting when the quorum has to be here, so if anybody doesn't think they're gonna be here next meeting, which is the nineteenth, that's the week before Christmas, so usually everybody's still here, and we all leave at next. She supplied the draft, that's why it's on here, if you want to pass it on first reading, we don't have to suspend the rules or anything like that, so we definitely need a quorum on the next meeting.
Does it may have any questions, I know Suzanne is not getting it till late, so, yes.
I made my bag in.
Is that in your bag? No, it's in your Dropbox, sorry.
I did read through it, though.
Does anyone have a question on the clerk salary that was in there? She has not had a chance to read it.
There's none.
Okay.
No, but due to me times, I understand.
Okay, I just, I'm here to answer any questions, it went from two pages to eleven, and I understand that that's quite lengthy, but anything that is a benefit to an employee is taxable income, and so it all had to be listed in there. We've never done that before, we've never put uniforms, and we've never put the cell stipends and clothing losses and everything into the salary.
They, they tax all of it.
All of it. Yes.
I'm used to.
They use a town vehicle to go home or keep it at their house, isn't that...
That is, but, and that is considered, yes, part of their benefits.
Might pay three dollars a day for the day, tax purposes, we're not having to pay that.
That's what I'm thinking. Three dollars.
Yes, they have to keep logs, not the police, but most other, you know, they have to keep logs and all of that, so.
So, like I said, I'm suggesting we at least pass it on the first reading.
If you guys have any questions, please call my office, you know, we worked really hard on it, we're trying to get it, you know, the right way, and New Focus HR absolutely helped us through every step of the process, which of course, we've never had that before, so, but we, we had a lot of lengthy meetings, Jamie was in on some of them, and along with the handbook, this is all part of it. Next is job descriptions, just so you know, ahead of time, so.
I make a motion that we pass the salary ordinance 2019, is this written on the first reading?
No.
What?
You don't want to pass it on the first reading?
I thought you were gonna look at it.
Yeah. Wow. They can pass it on the first reading.
What's the thing, maybe you'll have a chance to look at it, so.
Okay, well, make sure everybody's here, then.
I'm sorry, it's my fault that I didn't have a packet, I didn't send an email, but I didn't know I wasn't in the bucket, so.
All right, ordinance 2018 dash zero nine, holiday order, that's separate. Everybody let them over, same as last year, the year before, the year before.
I returned to say that this is passed, and Dr. DeSinger, oh. I think it's 2019.
Right.
They are, but they haven't been passed, right, they're... I moved to pass orders 2018 dash zero nine.
Second. Motion is second, any further discussion?
Come on, you're gonna get on the block or something out there.
Okay.
I don't get to point my...
All right, we've got a motion and a second, no further discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's opposed, motion carried. Under new business, I'm gonna bring this up, the fire department, in the budget last year, we decided to use X amount of dollars, the town did, to give to the department to use for building, I've unveiled, going beyond the two hundred to state, they're getting it prices for all members, pair of pants, shoes, two shirts, jacket, it would be a dress uniform. And this guy will spur, because the guys are wanting to get more involved in the community, do colored guards, funerals, we happen on the rash of funerals, and kind of like EMS, we don't really look presentable with our old clothes. So Mark's asking permission, and we're asking permission to go ahead and spend the four thousand that was allotted, because it's over the twenty-five hundred dollars. We're still in discussion on how to come up with the other four thousand dollars that it could cost us, we're waiting on our second quote right now, on the uniforms. If, with that being said, he's also asking, and the department's asking, it goes cheaper, we're not gonna go cheap, but we wanna go good quality at a cheap price, I'll put that up, and if we can do that, can we get four thousand more to purchase the whole uniform set for all thirty, and right now, there's not thirty of us, but to do that. So, that's what, that's what the fire department's asking, we've already been allocated to four thousand, we're just asking if we can get the other four thousand and go from there. Am I correct there, Mark?
Yeah, out of this year's budget.
Yeah, use it out of this year's budget, because we have thirty, after payroll, we will still have thirty-one thousand dollars in our budget, thirty-one, six, six, eight, I gotta get that first, and it's just another step, because we want to start doing other things, like if we go to the library, if we go to the school, we want to be presentable or...
It's not in your budget, Sean, you never get it.
No, I hadn't get that, so, there's still, like I said, after this payroll, there's still thirty-one thousand dollars.
It's in the current budget.
It's in the, yes.
Yes.
And there again, the guys know what the shoes are for that, they're not to be one of the work, they're not to be, you know, but when we give things, like the carnival, we brought a carnival, let's be fair, the kickoff festival, I get it straight, we look more professional.
That would come out of the clothing? The vestes?
It could come out of the clothing.
Yes, and that, or was that?
Yeah, that's right, yes. But, I'm just saying...
Where's the initial four thousand at?
That's in, show us what's on there.
There.
Explain at least a real quick...
I think it was putting to the supplies, we thought we were gonna use it as supplies, but...
Other supplies?
Yeah, but you can pretty much, you can move money between your funds, if you have to...
We can categorize it as equipment, we add it to...
We have some firefighters that they're basically full pay yet, so we can move some of that money, you could also...
I know you're gonna make five hundred bucks off of me, because I didn't make enough to get full pay this year. So there again, we're asking, Mark, as the department head, is asking permission to be able since it's over the forty-five hundred dollars.
I'll make that motion. Money's there, just have to put it where it needs to be.
Second.
This motion is second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. I think you and other department...
Thank you.
Anybody else have any other new business?
Um, I have a couple things, I was asked by Jane Hall at the library to announce a couple things, just as reminders, Thursday, tomorrow, they're having an Instant Pot class, Rock Pot class. Saturday, December eighth, from noon to two, Santa's gonna be there at the library, so bring your kids, and also December eighth, from ten to one-thirty, they're having a cookie walk, so. If you have any specifics or questions, just reach out to Jane Hall at the library, she'll, she'll... Or, Mrs. Aron, are you?
Santa will be there.
Santa will be there.
Yeah, also, one more thing, new business, I did rewrite, I did write that UTV ordinance, or at least a draft of it, and I sent it out too late, so I don't know if we should take some time to review that, or, you know, definitely.
Derek said, I'm getting this for her. Okay, well, that's step number one, that's closer than we were.
I did re, I did review it, now it's very vocal, and I expressed some concerns to Millen, he was willing to look at that and write some things in there, so I'm okay with that.
Uh, yeah, I, I mean, I'll just talk about some quick specifics over it, so pretty much, we're trying to get off-road vehicles to be allowed here in the community. I just pretty much brought in the golf, golf cart ordinance, and readapted it to golf cart and off-road vehicles, I updated the definition through the state, the state's definition, but I also included some things, like several different names, utility task vehicle, utility train, side-by-side, recreational, off-highway vehicle, and there's, you can call them so many different names, so I listed as many as possible. I left it up to the chief of police to make the final call on a vehicle that's been put together, or, you know, has different parts, you know, if it's like half wildcat, you know, or whatever, you know, I've seen them before, you know, if you grew up out in the middle of nowhere, you've done things like this. So, I, I, you know, I, I think it's pretty fair that chief of police makes that decision. Another thing is that, no, no handlebars, nothing less than a steering wheel and a foot pedal to engage the, the, the motor, just simply because finger triggers and handlebars, you can, you can get pretty, pretty wide range with those kinds of vehicles. But other than that, it's pretty, it's pretty specific to where the golf cart ordinance is. I did change the, the, the cost, it was twenty-five dollars for four years, I believe, they said, I changed it to twenty-five dollars per year, which I thought was pretty fair. So, and, and what Sean was mentioning was that, the one thing I did forget in here was specifically stating OEM exhaust for any of these vehicles, we do live in a quiet community, and so this is definitely something we negotiated on, and hopefully we can get this figured out, and get it passed for, for older folks, and be able to drive in, drive into town, oh, and, and Mr. Dean back there, yeah.
I got a golf cart.
All right, thank you. I know this is not on there, but Jamie, update real quick for us, will you, with the trail?
We're almost done, probably tomorrow we'll finish up, so, we still gotta fix the road and all that, but it's a mess, but it's coming.
Good, I want to thank you guys for all the time you put in out there, I know there's been other things pushed off, and people complain about this, people complain about that, but if they see the old picture of what's being done, they, they would probably say, oh, okay, I can see, I can see where we could be second line instead of first in line this week, so. Claims.
They've been picking up the leaves and everything else, that, it's all they've been doing, they've had it full plate.
Especially with the weather we've had, getting the leaves picked up.
Guys have done a good job.
Okay, Suzanne's got a boatload over here for us.
I was contacted by Culver, I don't know all the details for this, it's a program, they're asking for people within the area, and they wanted somebody in government, that's why they contacted me, to take part, this is occurring in April, you know, which is outside of Atlanta, Georgia, but it's Walkability Action Institute, it's a program, they're trying, it's, the CDC is involved, they're trying to promote activity for health within communities, so I told them I was interested, I haven't absolutely committed yet, and I think it's a program you have to apply for, so I don't even know if it's gonna happen, but you learn more about walking, how it helps health, and how to incorporate that into your community, so that's a possibility that's coming up. Donnie Ritzma from MACOG had contacted me this week, there's a program, the problem is, it's, the app is due Friday, so it's, it's not feasible to get it completed, but he's gonna keep me in touch with the next one, which may come out in May, it's for trails, so we need to get our trail more specific, more planned, so that if, when these programs come, we're ready to jump in.
So where they can access the park?
Yes. So we just need to be more, get things more specific. Stellar announcement is, it's been changed from the tenth to the eleventh. So that will be Tuesday morning, between ten and ten-thirty. And if anybody's interested in going, you can go to the county building, second floor, and in that meeting room. That's where the announcement, the phone call will be taken. One other thing, this is from the task force. I've worked on completing these, these we've talked about for a long time. These are folders inviting people to participate, I guess be involved more than participate. It's a letter of invitation. We have numerous openings on boards and commissions. So this is a folder asking for participation. And in here is the vision of Argus, which comes from our plan, our comprehensive plan. And each of the boards and commissions, just a summary of what's needed. We're talking about plan, commission, what we need. So this goes through how many members, what the members need to be. So this is put together for people of, that are interested. We don't want to just handle it too casually. People have an interest, you know, we do have this ready now, because we do need to get people involved. That's what we challenge you to become involved and help shape the future of the Argus community as part of the letter. We do have these, we'll have some here at the office, we handed up to you out the other night. That was through the task force, and I think that's all.
Okay, thank you. Do I got anything else? All right, now we'll jump to claims.
The total docket for December the fifth, fourteen, is three hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and ten dollars and five cents. The top five claims are as follows. Number one is INPA at a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars and thirty-one cents. Number two is payroll number twenty-four at thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars and thirty-nine cents. Number three is Anthem at seventeen thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars and thirty-one cents. Number four, or five, is, or I'm sorry, four, is Republic Services at twelve thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars and fifty-four cents. And number five is Indiana Department of Revenue Sales Tax at eight thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars and sixty-nine cents. The top five claims total two hundred and forty-one thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty-four cents, and represent seventy-five percent of the total docket.
I move to accept claims fourteen fifty-one through fifteen eighteen.
Second. Motion is second to accept claims. Any others questions or discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. I don't know what happened with the recycle schedule last week. They were awfully, they didn't pick up.
Okay, on eleven fourteen, if you looked at your schedule, it said that they would pick up, they wouldn't pick up. It was in there twice. We sent out, um, the stuff that said that we had a new schedule, and then if you followed it, if you went in order, it would have been a pickup week. So last week would, when it fell through the stuff, people were getting their weeks mixed up.
Because I know, I drove through town, even myself, put it out by the schedule, and they didn't pick up. So we took it back in, and we took it out the next week, and at four o'clock, it still wasn't picked up. So I had myself called Republicans and said, hey, what's going on? Oh, we, we changed the schedule, it's like, oh, nice.
Could be given an alert.
I mean, seriously, that's what she said.
Well, okay, when we sent it out, we noticed that the, the November fourteenth or whatever was, they never alerted us that they changed it last week. And we noticed that the two Novembers were together, we sent out another schedule way back in the spring, but I don't know what.
Yeah, they have one too.
This was all of them.
Yeah. Anyway, anyway, it's on schedule for next week?
Yeah.
Because this week's week, so...
So what do we do when our bins are full like ours is?
I put mine in the rental house.
Okay.
And that was really full. But yeah, it really was a pain in the butt that way, because I mean, people left it out overnight, and it was, it was bad. And I don't blame the town, I'm just saying that got screwed up.
I guess I didn't know that they didn't pick it up on the scheduled day, so, you know, I mean...
I'm not blaming the town, I'm just saying that it got messed up.
Yeah, because I think they got this morning, they thought it was that overnight, and it was still full.
Well, but again, I didn't hear that they didn't pick it up on the scheduled day.
We, we can fix it.
We got it fixed.
I make a motion to the jury.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thanks.